The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Our Father in heaven, dear Lord God, we thank you for your continued blessings upon the citizens of Dillon. We ask, dear Lord God, that you continue to bless our mayor and our city council, our city manager, our city attorney and department heads on tonight as we gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And we pray in everything we do, we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, for it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome everybody here this evening. I want to make a motion to approve the agenda if I have to.
Make the motion.
All will be approved.
I approve.
A motion to approve the minutes from July 11th, regular schedule meeting.
Make the motion.
All will be approved.
I approve.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We're a week later than we usually meet. Our city managers downtown on baseball or softball obligations in Mississippi. He was out all last week. Then we'll meet on the second Monday. Thank you all for rearranging your schedule. I'd like to open the night with, first thing, I want to congratulate our World Series champions, the Dillon Angels and the Dillon Ponytails, which are Dixie softball world, they won the Dixie softball World Series. The Dillon Angels are 10 and under group and the Ponytails are 12 and under group. So we had two teams that won the softball World Series. We will be holding a recognition for them at the Wellness Center we're looking at. I think it's next week. Glenn will talk about that a little further in his remarks. Also, congratulate Police Chief David Lang, City Dillon's new police chief. Process that went very thorough. Everybody was involved from the city council, of course, it's the city manager's decision. He also had a committee. And also like to congratulate Lieutenant Kimberly Nelson, who was also in the running. They found that David, Chief, was the appropriate choice. I couldn't agree more. I want to welcome, we're glad that process is over, reset, and it's done. So City of Dillon does have a new police chief. We all want to congratulate him, please do so. Good choice there. I walk a lot when I go in the morning to the post office from my office. Lately it's been too hot, but when I do, I notice we got a condemned sign on the building right near down for Price's Furniture. I know I called Glenn the other week, but the front of that building has come down.
Yes.
And I know I called you, and I don't know if y'all just did that, that condemned notice before or after that. My question is, what do we do now? Or what's the property on to do now? Because that's not a condemned building that's detached off, you're like a house.
Yes, sir.
Detached on name.
Yes, sir. He still has the 60 days in which to comply, to get a contractor, to renovate the buildings back to the city codes and building codes. If he failed to renovate the buildings during that time period, then, so to speak, the ball is back into the corner of the City of Dillon. And at that time, I think Glenn and I talked a little bit about it, because we can either contract it out to the contractor to have the building demolished, or it burnt, and his crew feels that they are comfortable in demolishing the building, and that's what would happen at that time, at the expiration of 60 days.
He doesn't have to complete the, he just has to show that he's going to be doing it.
Yes, he has to have his general contractor pull it pregnant, and his subcontractor.
Not finished though.
Not finished, just to pull it. Yes, sir. And he'll have six months out of it.
I wanted to make a deal.
Some for the size, yeah.
You kind of know what's coming with the age of buildings?
Yes, sir.
There's a number of them that's, that's going to revamp.
Yes, sir.
What's that? I was asking, that one with vacant.
Yes, vacant.
I like, because I think it's right beside, you got Price's Furniture, and he has another little.
Where the shoe shop?
Yeah, the shoe shop. And then it's that next one, I believe, right in that area. Alright, well at least we know what process is, where we're headed with that. Maggie, I know I read your email today a little bit on, when you went to Hartsburg on the downtown descent plan. I guess I'll just wait to hear from you later, if you can present it to council in a later date.
Well, it's complicated.
Yeah, it is as well.
And so, rather than get into it, we have so many things, I would like to discuss that with you and Glenn. Glenn's not seen it, I'm sure. So then we'll come back and discuss it.
Alright.
A lot of good ideas.
Well, good. Work on a plan.
Yes, sir.
Work on downtown.
Yes.
That's one of my biggest priorities is downtown. Either we come in and look at doing something, or have the structure to do something down the road. I look forward to it. Ball fields, there are, I know we got some money, work on the ball fields now that I brought up to you about three, four months ago. We got some grant money on that, so that will be enhanced out there, and we're going to do improvements. I think you're going to see a much better complex than we had this.
How much money? I would, that 42,000.
Does that doesn't match, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to cut it off after, I think the biggest kicking post we have is council, a lot of times, is computer maintenance stuff. And I was looking at the new budget, and I noticed on the computer subscriptions, the software subscriptions, and the IT on computers, some of the departments have already maxed out the budget on the first of the fiscal year.
We pay it annually.
What's an annual pay? I didn't include water sewer, I don't know what that is, but I imagine it can't be more than the general fund and the golf course. We spend about 48,000 just in, on that side, on computer maintenance and. Did we contract that out? I think somebody asked that.
Let me just tell you something. You feel like you've stolen some. If I could get mine down to 48,000, I'd do backward flips on 60,000. It's like you don't know whether you need it or not.
Yes, sir.
You know, and hey, they've got you.
It's all about you. I mean, would it, would it be through a computer, IT, personal staff?
You still would have to have those licenses. Dillon computer person. Four million dollars a year, and everybody would be out there.
I had thought about, possibly one day, we're going to have to get to that point is to hire an IT, an IT person to have on the side. Because that's what everything is today.
It's a licensing scheme.
But if every, the first month of the fiscal year, I notice that we have the computer maintenance. We do that every. I understand that, Dr. Watson. What I'm asking is, can you kind of spread it out? Where you got to do it the first month of the new fiscal year? You can't go into December, everything's going well. I mean, you're only doing it once a year.
It starts, it begins July the 1st. Your new contract starts. So I go ahead and pay it annually instead of asking them to bill me quarterly.
Have we looked at doing another contract with somebody else, to see if we can get the cost down?
The IT person I use, I've used him since, in the 80s, and he has not gone much aggressive at all. The software that we use, he knows the people that he can contact. If I got a problem, he's down here. He doesn't wait three days, four days to get in touch. He's down here. Been very happy with him doing what he does.
Still got to watch it. I mean, it's like competitive, something. We may not be able to be more competitive than that. But nothing should be omitted.
About $4,000 more, you know, for a budget of, that's his own worth.
I think it's been a 75, 80,000 dollar in all departments for them to have the maintenance done, correct? Curry Force, but did it golf course, do?
Yeah, probably about close, yeah. Probably close.
I'm like the mayor, I don't know if we can just sit there with that contract, maybe there might be something else out there even more competitive than we can, we can, I don't know.
Well, none of us up here know.
None of you know.
Is that a question?
I'm not saying that you don't, I'm just saying that we look at it.
There's a lot out there, a lot out there, and then, oh yeah, we can do that, we can fix your problem. And after you've spent 30, or 40, 50,000 dollars, well, I can fix it.
Does that price include the software maintenance agreements with software vendors?
We have the software, then we have the on hardware, and I've got it split out.
Do you probably, do you have to pay a license every year to use?
You do.
Yeah, is that in that too?
I don't think they listen to that.
Yeah, just, you buy the hardware, you buy the software, and then you have to buy a license every year to use it.
But you can call them 24/7, and I've paid good things for dollars.
It's a scam, too. But I mean, he may be the best in the world, but the whole industry is a scam. You came to town, you mandated to use it, and they know.
Bert, last thing, I got a call from Gerald Howell on Ellen Lane. Said there's a tree that they cut down years ago, an elm tree. He said, you'll see it when you turn into Ellen. It's right beside a light pole, right up to it, blocking the light and everything. Just take us again. We got to count everything. That's all. Well, the first thing, just to piggyback off your comments, Mayor, about the Dixie Angels and Ponytails, I'd like to also congratulate them on their World Series championship. We've been involved with Dixie softball almost 20 years, and in the last two years, we've actually won three World Series, in three different age groups. So that's a plus. As we all know, Dillon is an athletic town, and girls softball is truly the mainstay in Dillon. We're going to recognize them Tuesday week, August 23rd, at 6:00 PM at the Wellness Center. We're going to feed the players and their parents, and then roughly around 6:30, if the public wants to attend, to have a little ceremony to recognize the girls at 6:30. But we'll make sure that we send something out to you this week as a reminder of that. I think something's going to be in the newspaper on Thursday of this week, just to show the girls our support in what they've done for the City of Dillon. At our last meeting last month, there were discussions about Mr. Earl Bellicin, who is the C Fund Chairman. I spoke with him last week while I was gone, and he was trying to get here today for our meeting, but he's not going to be able to make it. He will again in September, but since then, I think North Fifth Avenue has been paved in my brain. But he will, he will be here September.
Why?
To go through the process, how the C Funds work. The mayor brought up about a grant that we have received, got the notification actually in the mail today from South Carolina Parks and Recreation and Tourism. Two weeks ago, I applied with the endorsement of Representative Hayes and Senator Williams through the PARG Grant, which is our Parks and Recreation Development. There's $42,000 that we've been awarded. We have to spend $52,500 to be reimbursed for 42,000. Now, these monies are going to be used at Sports Complex to purchase four new scoreboards, to replace our asphalt, walkway entrance with concrete, upgrade bathroom, facilities such as sinks and toilets, and some landscaping. This is in the plans right now. We'll get started then, possibly around the first October.
So you're not going to have to take any money out of hospitality?
Well, we'll have to spend money upfront, and then we reimburse. We'll be reimbursed, if we spend $52,500, we'll be reimbursed for 42,000. If we spend $75,000, we're still going to be reimbursed for 42,000. But yeah, we spend money upfront, then they reimburse us that.
So how much money would the PARG Grant and the money altogether, because we did it for the Wellness Center, and we ended up putting a hundred and something thousand dollars in that? So you don't have any quotes or anything on what it might cost to get all this upgraded, done?
Yeah, we got, I think Bert reminded me, or helped me here, was it 10,000 to redo the walkway?
Yes, sir.
That us doing the lake, was correct. That was just material costs. Am I correct?
That's right.
Scoreboards are going to run anywhere from 15,000 to 20,000. So you know, that's 30,000, and then upgrades of the restrooms and landscaping. Now, in front of the landscaping, the grant will pay a portion of landscaping, but no more than 50% of what the grant is. So most of our work will be done as far as equipment, when landscape come on the backside. So we may spend more than 52,000 dollars to do the landscaping. That's all I have at this moment.
Who's going to draw the landscaping up?
Maggie has been working, you working on that, correct Maggie?
Yes, I am. We're working with Deeds Nursery on some projects, so they're going to help with the design, and we're going to do the landscaping.
Well, the Dees or Dale's?
Dale's, I'm sorry. Dale's. Started with a D, not.
Well, we're going to look into getting sponsorships for the scoreboards and stuff like that?
Yeah, we're going to do that, try to do that on an annual basis. They pay a certain number of dollars for that.
Now, who's going to be doing the design?
The nursery.
Alright. Welcome Tony McNeil, Dillon County Executive Director. Tony, I think, wants to present to us this retail strategy plan. Brought our kitchen through this fast, didn't we sleep?
I made one. Thank you, Mayor Davis, members of council. Sorry about that. You know, we've been fairly successful over the past six years in recruiting industrial prospects, Wyoming Gordon, Harbor Freight expansion. It's been about 400 million dollars in new investment, and over 1,000 new jobs. And as we were recruiting those prospects, we were often asked about retail. And so what we, what we quickly found is that the industrial dock is connected to the retail dock. Those two docks are also connected to housing. So we established some goals, and we decided to complement our industrial strategic plan with a retail strategic plan as well, to complement that. So there's a few goals there. One is to increase the tax revenue for both the county and the city. Attract desired businesses such as hotels, restaurants, and retail, improve the quality of life, and create jobs. Now, when you look at retail, there's, every one in four jobs are actually retail jobs, as we look at the overall demographic. They're very competitive in terms of the wages, 38,000, roughly 38,000 versus 37,000, retail versus non-retail workers. Here's something I'd like you to pay attention to. I know you guys probably can't see this, but this is something that's very important in terms of increasing our tax base. When you look at the bottom, restaurants like Mo's, Southwest Grill, let's say they invested a million dollars and created 15 jobs. That's $20,000 more to add to the tax base than we had before. If you look at the top, at places like Lowe's and Home Depot, let's just say it's a $40 million investment in 300 jobs. Walmart is also somewhere up there. That's $800,000 in new taxes, just from retail. The other thing that's very popular now is we're doing a lot online. We just talked about IT. So there's a lot of folks that are actually ordering things online. The largest retail group, or largest consumer group, is actually the millennials, born between 1982 and 2004. About 75% of the consumers prefer to shop in the store, so they still like the brick and mortar, even though they have the convenience of online shopping. So what we decided to do is actually partner with the outside agency. And the reason why I wanted to do this is I wanted this team to partner with us to work on the demographics and the analysis from a retail standpoint. And we've done that. This is a part of the team here, some members of the team, from marketing, executive team, legal, accounting. Here's the other thing I'd like for you guys to take a look at, so you can understand our logic. The first thing we look at is the market analysis, and the thing I really love is something called a gap analysis. And I'm going to show you this chart that shows you in a 15-minute drive time, what our population spends their money on. You'd be very surprised. Our average income, household income is about $29,000. But what you will find is that 75% of our population own their own homes, with that $29,000. The other thing that you'll find when I show you this other graph is last year, this is not the entire county, but in a 15-minute drive time radius, we spent 18 million dollars on clothes. We spent another 20 billion dollars on eating out. So we go for market analysis, we also look, that's the gap analysis, we also look at peer analysis. So a lot of times, when you see me driving around, or you may see me in other towns, what I do is I actually compare what we have in Dillon to other places. That's called a peer analysis. And I've had the pleasure of visiting all 46 counties in the state of South Carolina. So if we're competing against a place for a project, I'll go and I'll, I'll look at their amenities. I'll check out their industrial sites. I want to understand apples to apples what we're competing against.
So you're saying that we spent 18 million dollars on clothes, and we're about, how many, 30,000?
32,000 people in the county.
We spent $6,000 on clothes, and the average income is $29,000.
Yes.
20% of our income was spent on clothes.
Yes. Um, we look at real estate analysis. The other thing that I think that most folks don't realize is, you know how you have that free app on your phone? And it could be, you know, I hope it's not Pokemon, but, you know, it could be Subway Surfer, whatever. It could be a free game of chess. Well, those free games are free to you, but they actually sell that information to other folks. And what happens is, every move that you make, when you go to Walmart, you go to the store, you go to KJ's, you go somewhere else, and you come back home, those movements are tracked. Every single cellphone user, those movements are tracked, and that's how we get most of our data. We narrow down strategic plan, proactive retail recruitment, and then we actually get the results of having an announcement. This is just some of the resources, and some of the sources that we pull some of the information from. And this is looking at that drive time radius. I'm just going to sort of scan through this, this five mile radius. This is the cellphone data. This was based from Walmart, people leaving Walmart, going to other places last year. And that's how we pull the information from your cellphone. This basically shows the race. This is the median household income. And you see the percentage here of one person, two person, three person households. Here's the other thing. You look at occupied housing, and all these dots being connected. Look at the average housing unit value. Look at the occupied housing versus the owner occupied housing. Just about 75% of that, you have about 6,500 that's winter occupied. More demographics here as far as the household, daytime population. We look at the education level, and again, I love to look at this gap analysis. Now, the thing that we didn't look at, or actually chart, is where we spend the money. But this is telling us that there's a leakage, and all cities and towns have a leakage. But I wanted to understand, what do we spend our money on? The reason why I wanted to know that is because we have to establish some focus categories. Just like in industrial recruitment, we focus on distribution, food processing, manufacturing, aerospace. We say, yes, we'd like to have more restaurants, we'd like to have more hotels, but does the data tell us that? Is there a demand for that? What are we spending our money on? So that's why I love to do a gap analysis, because first, in order for me to solve a problem, I have to first establish the baseline. So that's what the money was actually being spent on. And then, the other thing I want to mention to you is that, we actually, looking at our peer analysis, we're compared to, or have similar demographics to places like Georgetown, South Carolina, Walterboro, Mount Olive, North Carolina. So if you guys are not familiar with Mount Olive, the Mount Olive Pickles, they have a Mount Olive University, and I've actually driven up there. They have a large distribution center. They have a lot of retail. They have about the same demographics as Dillon. It's another place called Topsin, Georgia, outside of Augusta, Georgia. Same, same thing, very similar demographics to Dillon. This is what our peer analysis is about. So to the average eye, it may look or appear as if we're just driving to this town, or, you know, lollygagging or whatever. But we're actually comparing notes and trying to understand how they compare to Dillon. Dillon is in the green here. I apologize, I know it's not as white as it should be, but we look at the Dillon, different demographics as compared to our peers in terms of automotive, in terms of clothing, in terms of full-service restaurants, groceries, so on and so forth. The other thing too that we look at is where is that growth? You look at drugstore, strip stores, grocery, fast food. You see the categories there, so when we look at those areas of growth, and then, these are the 2016 planned expansions. What areas, what categories are actually expanding? We look at restaurant, we look at apparel, home grocery, drugstore. So basically what we're doing now is, you have to have, in order to have an announcement, just like industrial, you need to have, number one, skilled workers, a pool of skilled workers. You need to also have the sites and buildings. And so that's what we've been doing now, is establishing those sites and buildings, land option agreements, the same approach that we use to industrial development. And you see the concentration really on the city. But the overall picture, and I believe a few weeks ago, we had the pleasure of having some of you in the meeting, and county council, the town of Latta, and the town of Lakeview, town councils, in the same room. And what we want to do is look at all of Dillon County, and look at those opportunities, you know, in between those towns. So this basically shows all the retail that we have here in a concentrated area. We're also looking at development along the interstate as well. So all those areas in between, what we found is that other retailers like to be close to each other. And that's sort of how they thrive together. So these are the categories that we're focused on. Apparel, we noticed there was a lot of expansion in pet stores, health and personal restaurant. I will tell you, without naming any names, and we can get into this, maybe in some executive sessions, we do have four prospects, four major prospects in retail. These are very well-known prospects that you would normally see at malls. And again, we can get into the details a little bit further, but I will tell you that we are generating some prospects. You know, pet stores, we have two prospects in that category. Casual dining, we have three prospects in the casual dining, limited service restaurant category. Health and personal care, there's three prospects in that one. And again, I just want everybody to understand that, when I looked at economic development, and I looked at the industrial recruitment, a lot of times, you were getting dinged as I would drive the CEOs around, and they said, well, Tony, where's a good place to eat? Where's a good place for, you know, the other executives to stay? They were asking these questions, and they were looking for certain amenities from these larger towns they were coming from. And quite frankly, I mean, they were sort of demanding that, and that was a part of their evaluation process. So I began to understand that the retail dock is connected to the industrial dock and the housing dock. And guess what? All of that increases the tax base. So as we talk about the condemned building, as you actually go in and rehab that building, remodel that building, it's going to be a different tax value. You're going to get more taxes. When you look at, let's just say, some farmland that you then develop into general commercial, it's going to go. it's gonna go from, you know, next to nothing to an increase in value. It's a tax increment. Same thing with industrial development. So when we do that, we tend to have more money in the budgets to do things that we need, needed done, um, to supply services, um, that we need for the community. Um, but, most of all, it's, it's gonna provide jobs, and it's gonna increase the quality of life. So, this is my last slide here. This is basically what we call a dashboard. It's kinda like being in a car, where you have all your gauges and everything. And so, you'll see that we have the focus categories at the bottom. You'll see my peer analysis up there, the daytime population, demographics, the industrial major employers. You'll see my name at the top, the focus properties. And then you'll see that fifteen minute drive time over to the right, with the partners over to the bottom right, and some more demographic information. This is what we're looking at. As we go out and recruit, this is the marketing material, one page. It's what we recruit and what we market with as we recruit, uh, different industries. So, where we are right now is we're actually recruiting prospects. Uh, and we're very, very close to an announcement, um, in the city, um, several announcements. Um, so, that's where we are. About half of the, the sixty-five thousand that we committed has been spent, um, half by the county, half by the city. Uh, and we're still, it's a two-year plan is what it is. Uh, we're closing out the first year and entering the second year. Uh, but, what we wanna do is deliver results to both the city and the county in terms of, uh, retail announcements. Any, any questions or comments?
How soon do you see, about the end of the year, will this happen?
I, I would say within, within, um, a couple of months, um, you will have at least two announcements. Uh, we need to discuss some other things, um, as we get a little bit closer, um, to see what the needs are in terms of the prospect, um, if there are any incentives. Um, I will tell you that some of the larger cities are putting incentives on the table. Uh, but we just need to look at, um, a cost benefit analysis of what the investment jobs are versus the incentives, um, just to make sure that we're on target. But, that's where we are.
Will it come back in a couple of months, having the executive session?
Yes.
Feel more detail?
Yes. I wanna, wanna keep you updated. This is really the most important slide, this is our dashboard. Cause we wanna be held accountable for everything that we do. And so, we want you to track, as we make progress, we want you to understand exactly what our logic is. And how we're going after these, these retail, um, industries. But it's definitely gonna help us in housing, it's gonna help us with industrial recruitment, and it's gonna create a lot of jobs within the city and within the county. Any other questions or comments?
Well, just the impact is the most, that you're building on, or you're trying to get on one of them? I don't know where you have me, it's more a pick what you're trying to do, man.
Well, the, the, the thing I would, I would mention to you is, let's go back. I want everybody to understand, it's, it's a nice to have for the city and for the county. But let's look at the numbers, okay, as, from a municipality standpoint. On five acres, next to one-eighty-one, we were getting four hundred dollars. And we had to split that with the, with the schools, as well, and the taxes, for five acres. And that six million dollar hotel located, or when they finish construction, and they get a certificate of occupancy, um, the taxes go from four hundred dollars for five acres to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for three acres. That's every single year. So, in that particular case, what we did, because it was in the county, and we would also do this in the city, is we actually, uh, gave them a tax credit up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is the first year in taxes. And after that, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in taxes from now until the end of time. So, that's the cost benefit analysis, that's the, um, tax increment that we have to look at. We take these properties, and it's farmland, or it's a dilapidated property, you fix it up, you get more taxes off of it, that's an increase in your tax base. So we wanna encourage them, whether it's housing, whether it's, uh, you know, retail, whether it's industrial, to improve, to increase the tax base that we can give, so we can actually collect more taxes. And then we can do more things. So, all of those dots are connected, is what I'm saying. It's a benefit to the community, it's a benefit to the city council, to the town councils, to the county. Um, and as I explained to the county council, we have an interest as well. Um, everybody has an interest. Um, so we have to work together to create jobs, it's connected to the industrial development. Um, I, I will also tell you, um, Councilman Heller, um, had mentioned this, but we do have a, uh, small manufacturer. Um, we're not quite waiting for announcement at this point, um, they're sort of gearing up. It's about a one-point-five million dollar investment in the city of Dillon. Um, that's not just retail, it's manufacturing, that's industrial. Um, so, all these dots are connected, uh, we wanna, I, I appreciate the council working with me, working the economic development. Retail development is economic development, housing is economic development, industrial development is economic development. We're just trying to put people to work. That's all we wanna do, we wanna increase the tax base, give them a better quality of life. But, this is the update for, for the paper, for the councils, this one page. This is what, this is how we're gonna update and, and, and keep you up to speed on what we have going on. So, probably the next time we meet, we'll be talking about it, that's, um, in the city.
Are you building a motel or a hotel?
A motel, I mean, a hotel.
Hotel.
Yes.
Six million?
Six million. It's a Holiday Inn Express. It's an eighty-five room, it is. It's about three rooms. What's that?
How many rooms is that, Tony?
Eighty, eighty-five rooms. Holiday Inn Express. Now, I will tell you, as you get into some of the other brands, such as the Marriott brands, they average about twenty million dollars, um, per investment. And again, that chart that I showed you with the twenty million dollar investment, um, you go back to the four-hundred thousand dollar range of getting taxes from that one investment. And, you know, thirty, thirty to forty new jobs. But again, concentrate on the tax increment and increasing the tax base. That's what this is all about, and the jobs as well. But that's really what it's about in terms of the council. So, just, I just wanted to give you an update, don't mean to take too long and talk too much, but, um, we'll, we'll be having some announcements soon. Thank you, sir.
Everything you presented, you should also have in your, in that color.
Yeah, you also have it.
I, I have a question for you, Tony. Uh, what happened to me and you sitting down showing Dillon County how we can save them money? With bringing new companies in?
Well, we can still sit down, I mean, we, we sat down and actually discussed that.
Well, well, wait, wait, no, no. It was, y'all, I got something that I'm launching, that I link up with companies. I got Florence County, all of these counties outside of my county is dealing with me in background checks and drug testing, in-house. If, nothing goes out of this bill, nothing. And me and Tony sat, uh, he invited me to the, um, to the job fair. Um, he was told to keep me out, but we made it happen, and, uh, I had over eighty-five people, uh, sign up for just me. I think I was the most out of all of them that they wanted to keep me out. But I'm here to tell you that, uh, Florence County is, that I love them, uh, they seed, they wanna grow. Uh, I'm going to every economic development office and talk with them about linking up with me, saving the counties and the city's money. And Tony knew exactly what I got, he was for it. And he, I don't know if he was forced to back off of it, but it's to bring money to the city. It's to bring money to the city, no hands down.
Well, what I say is that, you know, I still support you from economic development standpoint. But again, once I get the companies to the table, then we can discuss them doing, you know, you offer your services. As I did before, we had a job fair, you know, my job is to actually connect your business with the company. So we get the CEOs in a position where they can discuss that aspect of it. I mean, I'm all for, you know, giving everybody the opportunity, giving them jobs. I mean, as you know before, you know, I support you.
But it was gonna be a senate for them to come here for Dillon County.
Right.
I was gonna be there to send.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and that's, and that's.
I would have come by us, not, not to them.
But, but what I'm saying is, that can still be a part of the incentive package, because as we recruit these companies, they need to have background checks, they need to have drug tests, and somebody needs to do that. I would much rather for it to come from somebody from Dillon than somewhere else. And that's what I was saying when I talked to the council, every incentive package is gonna be different for every single company, okay? So, everybody has that common need. And, and again, what my job is, is to bring jobs to the community, regardless of how anybody else feels. I'm hired to do a job, I work for the citizens, cause you guys pay my salary. And so, when you come to me and say, okay, this is, this is what I have to offer, I take that seriously. And as you know, anybody that's ever come to my office knows that it's an open door. If I can see you, whether you have an appointment or not, I'll sit down and listen to what you have to say. And if I can help you, I'll give you the shirt off my back. But it's all about these incentives and bringing them here. So, yes, I mean, and, and to answer your question, yes, you're an asset. And I haven't forgotten, it's just the timing. It's the time and place.
It's got better, I can save you a whole lot now.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is that, we get to, we, when we get together as a group, we have to decide what incentives we're gonna offer. And when we put that on the table, it's not just a Tony and Shaw decision, but it's a county-wide decision that we sit down and we offer these incentives, and then we have to have readings on it, we have to turn it into a public document, there has to be ordinances and resolutions. And so, it's, it's, it turns into not just talking, and the, the city attorney will vouch for this, but it actually turns into a legal binding document that's final. And if people don't hold up their end of the deal, then that's how lawsuits get, you know, kinda started. But we don't want it to come to that, but that's, that's what the process is. So yeah, we support you, and we'll continue to support you, but it's all about us having a collaboration, yeah.
Right, well, I mean, you know, it's Congress, Georgia, I'm down there. So, they do same as y'all, they got the same as y'all, so, I mean, it's a win-win for them, and it's a win-win for Dillon too, but, again, we're talking.
Is Mr. Corbin here?
Yes, sir.
Corbin is with, uh, the Old and Dear Laura Restaurant, off of Bradford, beside the class of parents.
Yes, sir, how you doing, man? I'm here to get an understanding of what the ordinance here, can't tell you. Uh, I've been told several times, several occasions, that something I can't do, um, at a Laura's is, uh, something like a sports bar slash restaurant, okay, I serve food there, and, uh, alcohol also. And, uh, it's mostly I got it together to be like an entertaining situation. And, uh, I'm getting worse, you know, around time, people coming to me and saying, I can't do this, can't do that. So I'm here today trying to get an understanding of what I can do and what I can't do in my establishment. Uh, my nephew, I'm sorry, sir, um, this is my staff here, uh, managers, and my supervisor over here. Uh, he pay up a bill, he go and pays off a bill for me, every, every month, you know, faithfully, you know, tax and everything else. Uh, I think he talked to Mr. Bennett on several occasions, uh, and, uh, he did, came back and gave me words to me that I can't do karaoke, or mic, uh, DJ, you know. I'm here, you know, to conduct business. I'm retired military, been in the military twenty-four years, alright? I'm not running no bad form, shape, whatever, back around here. I just wanna make sure I do the right thing, we all get, I do the right thing, and get paid. I'm trying to bring money to Dillon, not keep money out of Dillon. Where it going now, everybody know, upset because the fact I can't do it, at, at, at my, um, at my establishment. Karaoke, open mic, that's it itself. And, uh, and I'm getting threats, uh, that, um, karaoke is, you can't do it, if you, if you, if I say do it, I will shut you down. You know, that, that's not business. But the problem with me, talk to me about it. You know, I come to you and you'll get told, open door, pause, whatever, keep it busy. Uh, but, uh, I'm just here to try to get an understanding of what is the, the city's ordinance here.
Alright, uh, I spoke with Bennett a little bit about this other day, let me tell you what he told me, and then he can, he can clear up the situation. I don't think there's any problem with a restaurant bar. I don't think there's any problem, if you primarily serve food, you serve beer, you got your alcohol license. If you wanna do a karaoke, I think the problem is, is that you keep getting added things. And where he seen, sees it's coming is a full-played band out there opening, say, two, two-way in, which adding in the ordinance.
You say back in the ordinance?
That's right, is that correct?
Yes, I can, I can.
Not in the ordinance.
Not permitted. Not permitted.
Is that, that's correct, yes. So we are trying to, to keep, cause I, I, I saw your coming today, I saw what you were here for. I got me thinking that we don't want to disallow, I always go back to Hartwell, cause I go there a lot, they got two or three bars on Main Street, and, uh, very progressive there. And I said, we, we are here to protect the people that can run a business, uh, open a chicken wing place or beer. That's not what we're gonna do, and I was real concerned about that, so I talked to him. I'm hearing a little more than that, and I think, uh, we had to shut that place down one time with another business owner, we don't want that.
I understand that, I understand that.
So, we're, we'll welcome you with what's permitted under the ordinance. And we'll be open arms, it's just a matter of when it gets beyond that, and that's what he's telling.
I'll be, um, the karaoke, and I haven't talked to you yet, I think I talked to you. I would like to talk to you as the owner, that way you won't get.
Yeah, so you kept getting word back to him, that's, that's not knowing where to do a business.
Um, so, our ordinance, uh, the district that you're in is a B-two district.
Okay.
It does not allow, um, DJs, it does not allow, uh, alcoholic drinking places. Um, you have a license that was issued for a restaurant and family activities. Um, from what I was talking to the mayor was, it, it, it ordinance, the business license establishment is being converted from a family restaurant activity, uh, into a, what we call an alcoholic drinking bar establishment. What I mean by that is, you apply for the alcoholic beverage license, like you said, no problem with that. The karaoke, uh, you can have a device that plays soft music in the background, sort of like your Olive Garden, your Longhorn Steakhouse, got no problem with that. Um, but what me and your nephew talked about was the live bands. When your live bands come, you got alcoholic drinking, you got DJs as you mentioned earlier, all of those are activities of a nightclub, which is strictly prohibited in that B-two district. But I'll be glad to give you the ordinance, glad to talk to you about.
I got it covered right here. It's, it's my wife's car rental.
Well, I'll talk to you about this, and if you still is dissatisfied with, with the decision from the zoning administrator's standpoint, uh, the correct way, uh, mayor, uh, would be for him to come through the planning commission by state statutes, and the planning commission, he will address the planning commission. If the planning commission disagrees with my decision, or agree with my decision, they make the recommendation to the city council. And then at that time, we'll end up at this position. But from right now, the, the zoning district does not allow for DJs, nightclubs, alcoholic drinking, and the things that are going on at this establishment.
Mayor, let's, let's say this, uh, good afternoon first, councilman, mayor. Uh, anywhere you go in a professional, uh, sports bar establishment, let's say Columbia for one, if you go to Wildwing, right off from the shopping plaza there in Columbia, any given night, you can go in there, and there's a live band playing, or there's karaoke going on. It's a difference between having a rap artist and a live band. A live band simply come in, they play jazz, and they keep a nice elegant atmosphere. There's a difference between partying and dancing at a live band. To clarify what Mr. Bennett was saying, the live band, the purpose of that was because we had constructed a night set aside for the spoken word, poetry, alright? Anytime you have spoken word and poetry, it's, a live band is gonna do-
Anytime you have spoken word and poetry, it's, a live band is conducive for the atmosphere, to play a nice soft music in the backdrop. We not trying to have a nightclub, we not trying to run, we got fifty cent of these rappers coming in, and we got forty, four hundred, four hundred people hanging out of the door, and people fighting and cutting each other, cutting, so we not trying to do that. We trying to have a nice establishment for the, the local people here in Dillon, to have somewhere to go and relax and lounge down afterward. Uh, the, the other thing we talked about was karaoke, I mean, karaoke, uh, from the ordinance, you guys were saying that that district is set aside for family oriented. Well, if you look up karaoke on Google, it's family oriented, everything about it is family oriented, people just coming together, having a good time, it, it, it's mostly set aside for people who know they can't sing, but they wanna go sing anywhere else, so they come there, and you have them having a good time, singing the words.
Somebody will listen.
Right, the only place that they listen to have a nice glass of wine.
Well, he said, oh, that wasn't the problem, karaoke wasn't.
Yeah, the device playing wasn't, uh, it's just when you have, when I've spoken to, uh, the nephew, uh, he told me there was a live band that was coming with a DJ, and that's kinda like what he just mentioned tonight.
No, I didn't, I didn't say I'm gonna have a live band, I didn't say I'm gonna have DJ, I said, I thought he, get idea what the ordinance here.
Let me suggest, y'all, you get back with him, and y'all, y'all get you, you know, together, y'all can work out, and go for it, that's, that's what's gonna happen.
Yes, sir.
So he's the man you gotta talk to and explain to, because those up here, we really don't know if you're hiring us, that's what I would suggest, that he'll be glad to sit down with you, see if you can make it work.
Yeah, well, Mr. Benny, we got, uh, Mr. Booker gonna give him a call on tomorrow, he gonna fax him over some paperwork, and then we gonna go from there. I mean, you know, 'cause, uh, I like to keep my money in Dillon, I mean, I'm sick of going to Florence and Lomond, I'm just keeping it. And to say that too, Mayor, um, I had a good crowd on, um, Wednesday night, who had, carry with Wednesday nights?
Thursday nights.
And, uh, Thursday nights, yeah, I had a good crowd, everybody come down, you know, let's sit down, drink a little beer, you know, look there, try and sing, can't sing, but when it came about, I lost everybody, everybody just, just fled. So, I cannot pay by being a man of flow, just don't have a customer there.
Well, you know, I'll go to the door, just call them up, and see you next, next.
Is there, is there a difference in the district that a lawyer is in versus the district that.
On Lane Street.
Tavern and Kendal House?
Um, the issue that, like I said, I was pointing to the owner, I, I thought he was the owner, but I'm saying that, that this gentleman is the owner. But as I explained to him, there are certain alcoholic drinking establishments that's already established here, and one you're speaking of is the Tavern, um, like, we got Ebony Inn, and there's about two other establishments that was already existing prior to us adopting the ordinance, which that's grandfathered in. Uh, but I would explain all that to you, and then we can just go from there.
Okay. Moving on, uh, finished business, ordinance sixteen twelve, adopted twenty fifteen additions, this is international building code, thank you much, all the favor, I propose, no new business, Council member reports, uh, Ellen.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Um, first of all, congratulations, David, on your new position.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I also like to ask this Maggie, why are you here today? Um, I noticed Mullins has just got a grant for the police department, are you aware of that?
No, sir, I just live there.
You just live there? Uh, Dana, you aware?
Uh, the city manager told me, he's all over.
Alright, I don't know how much money it was, the grant Miss Maggie, but it was hundreds of thousands of dollars because they just bought the new police cars with it. Alright, also in Donaldson, they just got grants to, to enhance the sidewalks, and do a lot more stuff. My question is, what are we doing to get the same kinda grants? What, what are we doing? Because I never hear us get awarded any grants to upscale or downtown, or enhance anything. So I'm just asking you, what kinda grants do we have right now that we're working on that's gonna help Dillon, the city of Dillon or Dillon County?
We looked into almost a million dollars worth of sidewalks on MLK, that's been what, Glenn, three or four years ago, and we put it on hold, because you don't have the match money. That's one side.
But I think every, every grant they're getting is match, I mean.
Well, you got to spend the money.
Well, I understand that, Miss Maggie, what I'm asking is, we, I never hear us awarded any grants, and I'm not trying to beat you up, I'm just asking, what are we doing, what do we got in place to help try to get these grants? You're a grant, you're the grant coordinator, correct? So, I mean, I'm just asking, what we got going forward that we're trying to get grants to help enhance still?
That sidewalk grant is still on the table as far as I know.
But what's our match, what's our match for that?
Uh, gosh, it is.
But I mean, there's other, there's other grants out there you can look toward and get.
Well, she's looking right now at downtown, I mean, that's where it's.
Right, she just says she didn't have anything.
She's working on, I asked her to bring it back to her.
If you look at.
Once you.
With the Hawks.
Good for that.
Once you look at the information that she received in Hartsfield, and I worked with Maggie from the very beginning of the downtown, I was kinda helped lead the way when we started that project, and we've, we've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars and grants to do the downtown revitalization. So we've gotten a lot of the infrastructure done downtown, um, I did have a chance, Maggie, to look at those presentations this afternoon that you sent, and there is one that is spot owned, of what, of where we are right now, what we've done so far, all of the infrastructure work we've done, and what we need to do now, and going forward, John, looking for grant money, to refurbish buildings, help property owners, uh, recruit new business, but that's all stuff going forward, and that's stuff we will be looking for grant money on.
You have to have a.
I don't have any problem with that, I'm just asking you, asking you what we got in place and what we going to try to get. I mean, three months from now, can you bring a plan back to council on grants that you applied for? I mean, Mayor just said you went to Hartsfield to try to find out how to start an entrepreneurship.
Not in that short.
Twenty-two thousand dollar grant.
That was a photograph that was given from, um, Representative Hayes today, Glenn?
Yeah, I had to fill out, thank you.
Well, I mean, we, we normally get that on a rotation every three years, so I mean, that's not really what I'm looking at. I'm talking about the hundreds of thousands of dollar grants that Mullins gets, that Donaldson gets.
I would tell you this.
There's no reason why we shouldn't be getting awarded grants.
When I first came to work for this council, I believe it was Dr. Wallace who said, we want some money. And I said, okay, for what? You just can't ask for money that you don't have a project for. Now, we just brought the million dollar sidewalks to the table, which would have sidewalked all of MLK in two sections. Now, that's a big difference in the people that walk up and down that street with a grocery bag.
Miss Maggie, I understand that, but I'm talking about other grants. I mean, we didn't get the MLK grant.
Yes, we were sitting there waiting.
You're talking about match money, let's throw that out there, what other grants are we working on to get? We don't have to have match money for every grant. You don't have to have for every grant, now, we lost, we did it for the water tank, we got a hundred percent grant. Do we know?
Whoa, fifty percent of a hundred percent grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we got that. I mean, what other grants are we working on, that's all I'm asking.
I didn't know that, I didn't know we had a free water tank.
You know what I'm trying to get to, we need to be working on getting more grants for you to do.
I, I know that most grants have a match to it of some sort, and you gotta, you know, you gotta weigh.
That's fine, but we still should be trying to work on getting the grants, not just because we don't have the money for this grant, we should be going out and trying to inquire about other grants that we do have match money to get for. I mean, that's plain and simple, I mean, that's great. Oh, probably that one. Uh, we talked about the Wellness Center last time, and this in the minutes, but I want you to go back to your report this month here, and look at how much money we lost just this month. We lost about eighteen thousand dollars.
What are you looking at?
Oh, maybe five.
Let's close it back.
Well, you don't have to close it down, I just think you need to find ways that we can, it actually break even, or we can, uh, not lose so much money with, I mean, the same thing with the golf course. We lost hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, and we're still losing.
This is the worst time of the year for the business.
Okay, you got the part that said me too, twenty-two thousand dollars in revenue. You paid out thirty-eight thousand dollars in expenses. That's seventeen thousand dollars just this month, all right, we got eleven more months. I'm just asking, what kinda plan can we put together to try to get that expense down? We're going in the same trend back, I mean, it's not a overnight thing.
Our, our only expenses out there is operational expenses, I mean.
I mean, I just wanted to bring that up, because next month it's gonna be decided, next month it's gonna be decided.
Those are expenses, you got, if, if you look at salaries, that's three full-time people, of eighty-nine thousand, and then the sixty-eight thousand in part-time is seventeen or eighteen people.
Okay.
And then your other biggest, your other biggest cost is electricity and gas, which runs about seventy or eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars.
Maybe next, maybe next time you can bring us a revenue trend for the year, what we can anticipate our, our losses to be through the year. I mean, I know July probably is one of your worst months in revenue, you, you feel like your expenses are pretty fixed?
Hey, yeah, the expenses, the other thing, other than if something tears up that, i.e. an air conditioner.
Right.
We had to replace an air conditioner back in July, which was about five thousand dollars, uh, that was not put in before.
Does that reflect in, uh, April?
I don't know if it's in this one, 'cause it may have been paid in August, so it wouldn't have been paid in, for July, we paid it in August, so that doesn't show up here.
Well, while you're doing that, Glenn, we got nine more months before we decide what we're gonna do with this golf course. Bring us some information back on that, so let's talk about it all at one time.
Yes, we can do that.
I mean, uh, the walking track out here at the recreation field, can we get, they say, I've had a couple of calls, it's grown up, I hadn't had time to go out there and look at, I just wanted to make you aware of it, that, uh, they said it's grown up a lot, and they can't really walk, probably normally can't, with a lot of brush and stuff on it.
Have y'all cut that late then, for? Yeah, so we cut it, we cut the.
They buried a lot of brush on the walk, walking trail.
On the, on the asphalt, yeah. It probably needs to be killed off, yeah.
Okay, you want me to just get it?
Yeah.
I think that's all we got, though.
I don't have anything else, I'm, I wanted to mention that presentation that Maggie got in Hartsfield, it really is gonna be a good plan for us to look at, continuing to look revitalizing the downtown area, there's a lot of good information out there, and I'm glad we sent Maggie to that event, I think it's gonna pay for itself for, and going forward.
A lot of little communities have just got more progressive on, on the district.
Yeah, and we, we've been.
We have.
Yeah, just matter of fact.
It's one of those, we have spence and we make.
Tony talked about retail, and I, I listen to him, see a lot of it, retail's going down, malls are closing due to online ordering stuff with Amazon, where are you gonna really grow anywhere is novelty shops, uh, Main Street, you know, you target circumvent Main Street. Other communities are doing it, I don't see why Dillon, we just have to look at, that's all we're looking at.
I'm with you, Mayor.
Ben, let's ride down there, uh, that stuff, it probably grew back up again, we're gonna do that next time.
It's okay, let's take a look at it.
Are you talking about the old basket?
Yeah, okay, that's all, that's all.
I talked, we wanted a county councilman on the Dillon County Theater, Glenn and I be going back and forth making little, you know, with, uh, city personnel, minor repairs, just the bathroom, or the wall, we done stuff in there. I hope the county and the city will come together and touch a little bit of money for the Dillon County Theater. That theater's used, more than people think, my office is right beside it, and I see those marquee lights going off on the weekend a lot, and is used by all segments of our community, everybody. And, uh, we, we, you know, I was just thinking the other day, Christmas is around the corner, how nice it was to have a Christmas program to go to, and, uh, you know, we put money in ball fields and ball teams and everything else, but there is another segment out in that community that don't play ball, and they like to go show their talents on stage, whether it's musical, or acting, or whatever, entertaining, and, uh, we're gonna be less of it if that theater gets run down and not used.
Todd, I met with the Arts Commission and the two people, new people that are in charge of our camp, and I pitched them the idea of having a children's theater production next summer, and I mentioned to Glenn about the amount of money that we would have to do to get involved in this, and he said, go for it, and we're gonna apply for that come January, so we'll have a children's summer camp, a musical in that theater.
Well, we got to have the theater up to standard.
Up to date, correct, yes, we did.
It's not, you know, it's not a huge incident, it's, it's stuff that needs to be worked on in that theater, that, uh, that's doable, and, um, you know, from the, uh, legality of it on who owns the theater, that's gotta be worked out, I mean, this, I know there are five over one C, but that group that owns it now, just, they just don't have the funds, and, uh, like I say, it's not big, big ticket items, and that is one of the few things that our kids can go with the date, still a, uh, an avenue for some culture.
Well, Hartsfield, you know, all they can say is more arts for children, for everybody, and, you know, arts doesn't quote bring in money, but it brings in quality of life.
Who's primarily using the theater now are the churches.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for, yeah.
But almost every other. They're setting something scheduling for the, for Dillon County there to be used, I mean.
There's a theater for it.
There is a theater for it.
Johnny Lures, give her a call.
And if this, they had a performance two weeks ago, the bathroom got stocked up, we worked on it, the, the air conditioner and the stand, so, you know, things have to be made, and we got to find a way to maintain that theater. It's a great jewel for our people, and it's the ultimate.
I was just interested in the C-Farm meeting, so you said that's gonna be, what, September?
He said he's gonna try to be here in September, yes, ma'am. Before, before you adjourned, just, I meant to ask him, my comments, I know Janet emailed information out to everyone, and we also hand-delivered a hard copies, is the emailing working, is that okay, with those that's given the email?
Sure.
Okay, and what we'll do is, those that didn't do it, we'll continue to do the hard copies.
I know, just.
Anything else?
Yes, yes, sir.
For the Mayor and Councilman, I was just sitting back here listening about the theater. When they, when they did the remodeling of the theater some years ago, that was a beautiful place, y'all did the scrubbers in the alley, and some nice benches in there, somebody can sit there and relax, but the prowlers have towed that mess up, they had to tow it up. We need to do something about them prowlers up in there, because they has towed the head bushes up, the road bushes, the benches, they just having a picnic in there.
Fortunately, that's been a, uh, uh, you know.
Run home!
You gotta watch what you do with, with the, and, you know, I talked to Glenn about that one day, he said, Todd, they got every right to sit wherever they want in a public place as much as you do, and, and they do, now, when they start doing things that are illegal in the area, we do monitor that, and, uh, but, and I'm afraid that's gonna only get worse, uh, we're trying to maintain that and, uh, to keep it, 'cause I hear people, they like to walk by, I see people taking pictures, coming back and down of, of the Lockham Court, and, uh, you know, we'll deal with it, it was better than when that building was about to fall in, and we fixed it, but, yeah, it's a sad situation, but we'll, we'll monitor. Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.